Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectments meeting of Tuesday, November 13th. My name is Jim Lehan, to my left is Mr. Calcutt, to his left is Mr. Hathaway, and to his left is Mrs. Jacobson. Mr. Palumbo will be here momentarily, he is stuck in beautiful downtown traffic, expect him momentarily. But we will start the meeting, I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being both video and audio taped, and may be seen on NCTV, YouTube, or whatever other fashion you may choose to watch. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to just take a few things out of order pending Mr. Palumbo's arrival, so if you'll bear with us, but before we do get into that, and I think this will probably take care of enough time for Mr. Palumbo to get here, I do want to just make a few comments because tonight is both a special and a sad meeting, for I think, me anyway, and I suspect for others as well. Tonight is Mr. Hathaway's last selectments meeting, and he will be leaving us to go to beautiful upstate, or downstate Maine, I guess I'd have to say downstate, York, Maine, and a new adventure in his life, and we wish him the very best. But I would be remiss in not telling folks a little bit about how much we appreciate Jack has done. Jack was our finance director 15 years ago, those folks, folks probably don't realize, but the average tenure of a town administrator in the state of Massachusetts is between four and six years. Mr. Hathaway's been our town administrator for 14 years, almost 15. He has served under eight different selectmen, that's a chore in itself, no one in their right mind would work for anybody that had three bosses, and not to mention 6,000 residents. It is not an easy job, and we are not a well-staffed department, this is a down-and-get-dirty, hands-on job that Mr. Hathaway has had, and it's a thankless job in many regards. I know firsthand how serving the public is very hard, very difficult, and yet very rewarding, you know, and it comes with its goods and its bads, and that's the nature of the job. But Jack has served this community admirably. It is not easy to find people that not only have the talent, but most importantly, people that care. Jack has cared for this community, he has, he lives here, he's a resident, it just means as much to him as it does to all of us, and that has come through in everything that he has done. His personal integrity, in my opinion, is unquestioned, and I have never enjoyed working with an individual as much as I have enjoyed working with Jack. It has been a privilege, I will miss you, you will be hard to replace, but you have done great service to the community, and we'll find a way very shortly to say thank you in an appropriate manner, but I did not want to let this opportunity go unsaid, that how much we appreciate you've done for the town of Norfolk, and we're grateful, Jack, so.
Thank you.
It is a small audience, but an appreciative audience, thank you for that.
Thank you.
But we will, we have a town meeting coming up, where we will have an opportunity to embarrass him more, more appropriately, so.
Thank you, those are very kind words, I appreciate it.
Very, very easy words to say, Mr. Hathaway.
It is mutual.
Would you please, in your last effort as this selectman meeting, I know you were very pleased to have this your last selectments meeting a little earlier today, I heard you say that, you were clapping, jumping up and down, and saying, "My god, I've been freed." Would you please read the agenda?
I'd be happy to. The Norfolk Board of Selectment meeting for November 13th, 7:00 PM, or thereabouts. First order of business, we'll point John Waddleton to the conservation, consider pointing John Waddleton to the Conservation Commission. Second, consider appointing Joe Fontes and Susan Willis to the Council on Aging. We have a conservation restriction for Norway Farms' open space to consider, accept the resignation of Tom Norton from the Conservation Commission, we have the annual Santa Parade application, and please consider approving a water abatement, a bill that needs to be abated. We also have discussion items, including Complete Streets Community Workshop, review town meeting warrant, and prepare for town meeting, along with the Lawrence Street Bridge update, and the report of the warrants.
I will, I will give an update just on a couple of meetings that I've attended also, no debate or deliberation or action needed, just, we all work independently with different boards at different times, and this is the opportunity we have just to share what went on, so, I have a couple of those items specifically on KP that I'll just share. All right, let's, let's go to the warrants, Jack, hopefully Jeff will get here. Let's see.
Mr. Calcutt's got the one.
These are all yours, wow. You're the one spending the money this week, huh? All right, we'll enjoy watching, go for it.
All right, well, I move to accept the warrants dated 10/26/18 in the amount of 806,972 and 42 cents, dated 11/6/18 in the amount of 103,967 and 63 cents, dated 11/6 in the amount of 572,385 and 98 cents, and finally 11/9 in the amount of 802,056 dollars and 70 cents.
I will second. No discussion, I assume? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ah, gosh, I'm going to avoid the action items until Jeff gets here. Jack, you want to talk about Complete Streets Community Workshop, or is it, should we wait for Jeff on that?
No, you can, I actually, I mean, you have a, Rich just asked me to distribute this pamphlet in your.
You folks are here for Lawrence Street Bridge, I assume, aren't you?
Yeah, just to get, we saw it on the agenda.
Yeah, why, why don't we, that's not something we're going to deliberate or debate, so Jeff doesn't need to be here, so, Mr. Calcutt is now our representative to DPW, so you're on.
Thank you. So last week I had the opportunity for the first time to get some exposure to a weekly meeting that occurs between the engineering firm, the construction team, and the town. I was asked to join this meeting just to get a feel for the conversations, as Jim had mentioned, I just was gracious enough to get appointed to look over the DPW as part of my selectman liaison assignment. During that meeting, one of the things that came up was a note identifying some impact items to the timeline that's currently out there. There was four items that were talked about. The first one was the Conservation Commission approval, this is something that had set the project back way earlier on in May, and had delayed it about four weeks before we were going to go out to bid. The second item was the DEP permit appeal, this is something that was done by the residents, there was a process and a delay that went along with having to wait for an appeal period, but that was something that went on during the summer. There's the unforeseen condition of the bridge, the abutments and the footings, we did a site visit a couple of weeks ago out there to take a look, once they had uncovered everything, and I think that there were some gaps identified in the structural integrity of what was believed to be underneath all of that stone. One of the things that the DPW director identified is that the strength has not as much value as even ordinary gravel, to where they thought that it was a little bit stronger underneath there. If nothing else, by the way, this I think solidifies our concern about the safety and the integrity of the bridge, and the need to have some work done. Finally, it's the weather, the heavy rainfall. The rain has been absolutely ridiculous up to this point, and at this point it's actually impacting the level of the water, and as I'm sure everybody's well aware, there are regulations that go along with having to work near or by the waterline on the pond. So, those four things taken into account, we find ourselves put back much further than we originally thought we were going to be, and now we're coming up on a time where we're expecting the weather to take a turn for the, you know, the freezing weather, the snow, with not really ending sight in terms of completion. So, what they're asking for at this point is there was originally issued a 90-day limit to the amount of time that that road was due to be closed. What they identified in this meeting is that they're looking for a 90-day extension to that 90-day limit, which would put us somewhere around the spring, March is I think the day, March, April, they were looking at having the road be back open. Now, there's a lot of variability in there, I think there's a lot of cushion in that timeline just to be able to accommodate for anything else that could come up over the course of the next few months with the unpredictability of weather. But the second that was mentioned, I wanted to be sure, and I think the board agreed, that we wanted to be sure that we communicated that out, and keep that open line of communication and transparency on what's been going on down there with the bridge. So I did want to get that out there, I wanted to make sure that that was known, and that was something that was identified. As we begin to learn more about a definitive outline as far as how that timeline's going to work, and where milestones are being put in that we can communicate out on, I'll be sure to release those through here, but as always, if anybody has questions, you can feel free to send them over.
Any questions? Got to grab the microphone, sorry.
Hi, I'm Dave Diamond, Three Breast Farm Road, and I just, I, I saw it on the agenda and had heard that the water was high, and probably even higher, got a letter from my pool company that for a hundred bucks, they'll come back and drain the pool again, seriously. But I think, I was an appellate, a lead appellate on the bridge, and there was one item in there, which was disruption of, you know, the contaminated area, and how would this impact, the bridge work impact that, if it would, and if it would impact it. So if there's any lowering of the dam beyond the boards that had typically come up, that was a concern, I just wanted to raise that concern. I'm not sure where it lands, so I thought it would be good to raise it here, maybe it winds up in Concom, or, or, you know, maybe Board of Health or something like that, but I just wanted to register here tonight, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Sir, did you have something you wanted?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay. Welcome, Mr. Palumbo.
Thank you.
We have, no, you can't help traffic, nothing you can do about it. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to take off, so.
Can't imagine why.
I'd love to learn how Tom government works, but thank you, Eric.
All right, it's nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Dave.
If we don't see you beforehand, have a wonderful turkey.
Yeah, we will.
Welcome, Jeff, we have only really kind of getting rid of the warrant, and Kevin just gave an update on the Lawrence Street Bridge update, in fact, maybe your comments, can I pass them down to?
Sure.
Just, just for your update, thank you. So let's get to the action items.
So, a little, well, I guess it doesn't matter, because we have a number of openings on the Conservation Commission, so, two, two of the items are related, so, I guess a little bit. So you did receive a letter of resignation from Tom Norton, just, I think, is, he would like to resign his position, so if you could just vote to accept that resignation, that would be helpful, and then, kind of attached to that, I know Jim had reached out and trying to get some experience back on the commission, at least for the interim, get John Waddleton. John has volunteered, I spoke to him as well, and he's volunteered to step back up, at least temporarily, until we can get some more experience on that board, so. You could vote to accept Tom's letter of resignation, and certainly consider appointing John to the Conservation Commission, because I think we're down to four members of.
Do I have a motion to accept Tom Norton's resignation with regret, I might add?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tom, thank you for your service, it is a thankless job, we appreciate your time. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Waddleton? Conservation Board, by the way, we, we need help here.
Yeah.
If anyone has any interest with Tom's resignation, that board is now down to four, which means if any member is not able to attend, they do not have a quorum, which is why we were very appreciative to Mr. Waddleton being willing to come back on short-term, until we can get some additional experience on that board, so, we need help. Anyone out there has interest, please contact the Selectment's office, and we'd love to have some volunteers, so. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Waddleton?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
John, thank you for stepping up and helping us at this point in time.
Then you have a.
Excuse me.
A letter from the secretary over at the Council on Aging, Kathy Burkle, she's the secretary of the council, suggesting that we should appoint Susan Willis and Joe Fontz, I hate to pronounce Joe's name wrong if I am, I apologize, I know Joe, I just don't know how to pronounce his last name. Both have been recommended by the council, and would like to be on the Council on Aging.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a conservation restriction, somewhere in Susan's pile, unless I stole it already.
No, it's in here.
Yep.
Oh, you have it in there? I didn't realize you had it.
It is.
I apologize, okay, thank you, she's way ahead of me, as usual. Elizabeth Maitland, attorney for Mr. Kane, and his development team has prepared a conservation restriction, so the property will be under the control of the town of Norfolk, specifically the Conservation Commission. In Ms. Maitland, Ms. Maitland's letter, that says the restriction has been reviewed by Town Council, which I agree with, the, and then the executive of Environmental Affairs, and the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs Legal Department, so it is in its finalized form, respectfully request your signatures where noted, yellow denotes Conservation Commission, blue denotes Board of Selectmen.
Am I?
So, as you may recall, any land that goes into conservation restriction obviously becomes tax-exempt land, that's why it goes before the Board of Selectmen, obviously as open space.
It can be removed by the legislature.
Correct.
Did, did we vote this, did I not remember it correctly, but I thought we voted the restriction, we just didn't sign the documents, or am I incorrect in that?
I think we've, we've voted.
Then we can vote it again.
Voted to approve the, I don't think we've, oh, I don't think we've voted in the past.
Okay.
No, sorry.
All right, well, we'll, we'll take it as a new item.
And then this, this one is our copy.
No, wait, I know where it is, yeah.
By Medway.
Yeah, that's the other one that you hand.
Beautiful piece of property.
Yeah, project looks great, too.
Any discussion on this?
That was one.
Have a motion?
Nope.
Comfortable?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Yep. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rob Kane, he dropped, he came, stopped by before the meeting, and he did drop off some more information about a utility pole, I said, obviously they don't have it on the agenda tonight, so we can't talk about it, but he gave me some information to give out to you.
Okay.
So he's, and I told him I would.
He wants to relocate one?
He does, and the utility, so he's, he's got a plan for the utility company for poles going into his new subdivision, and he doesn't like where the utility company is putting one, and it conflicts with a waterline.
Okay.
So, he, he's asking to move it on, or keeping it on town property, I said I'd have it, I'd have Rich and Bob McGee review it, and then give their recommendations to you, but.
Well, we could post that for the 17th.
Yeah, yeah, he was fine, he just.
That's not a, I don't think anyone's gonna.
No.
He did concern over that.
I think the, if you're ready, I'll keep going, otherwise I'll, Jeff can, I'll wait there.
Thank you, sir. Black, okay.
We're going to have you sign both copies, just in case, because we don't have to.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry.
Still wasn't me this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just the two?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I got it.
Oh.
There. So we did have an application from the Lions for a request to have the annual Santa Parade for December 2nd, kicks off at 2:45, fire trucks will leave the station, from the station to Hillcrest Village, 3 o'clock, the KP band meets at Hillcrest Village, 3:30, parade departs from Hillcrest Village to Town Hall Library, include Santa helpers, KPHS band, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, and fire trucks and police. 3:45, they'll have pictures taken with Santa at the library, and the KP band will play some holiday music on Town Hill. 4 o'clock with Town Hill Celebration sponsored by the Recreation Department, including the tree lighting, caroling, and refreshments, and at 6:30, the program will conclude, based on the number of pictures with Santa.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor for Santa?
Aye.
All in favor for Santa Claus?
My kids are pumped.
That's a great thing when they're little.
Nobody messes with Santa Claus.
Nobody.
Especially in your house.
So they, they did, nice note down the bottom, they said they were pleased to have the selectmen participate in the parade this year, you could either march, or they could make arrangements for a vehicle, depending on the weather and your preferences, so, if you're interested in participating, there's a, there's a spot for you.
Kevin, you gotta do it, you need to think down.
Do I get to sit next to Santa?
I was hoping, yeah, you can if you wear the elf outfit, elf outfit.
Me?
Kind of, kind of like Will Ferrell in the Elf.
Jim will find one with the Red Sox branding on it.
I would never do that, never, 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 never.
Oh, did they announce the Coach of the Year this afternoon?
They did.
Who got it?
Oakland.
Ah, that's a travesty.
You can't be happy, you gotta win everything, don't you?
We got robbed.
Matter of fact, we do.
Yeah, we got robbed.
Well, Mookie's going to win on Thursday, that's all I care about.
All right. Water abatement.
Oh, and we have a water abatement, so, we just, this is a technical glitch, this property should not have received a water bill, it's actually the house that we took by tax title last year, so the water department just didn't shut that process out of their So we just need you to wait, abate the bill and sign off on this abatement. I don't think we've ever actually, I can't recall ever abating a water bill in my tenure, so this is, they snuck this one under the radar. I know we've talked about it, oh, we've, we've abated partial bills.
We have, we've done some partial abatements.
Yeah, okay, I stand corrected.
That were our fault.
I was wrong again.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sign above your name, please, sir. And that is still property that we're going to auction off at some point, we're working with a, Rich is working with an engineer to combine two lots, because we had another piece of property next to that house, and then once those lots get a in our plan from the planning board, then Todd and his people will be able to auction that property off. So, should raise.
Thank you, sir.
A little, a little money, get that into free cash for next year.
You want a boatload?
Not a boatload, but something. So I think we're done with action items, so then we had, we did Joe, yep, we did, okay. So we had the Complete Streets Workshop, and there is a packet, there's a handout in your packet, so on December 6th at 7:00 PM at the Freeman Kennedy School in the cafeteria, Rich and the MA, I think he's doing this with the MACC, are going to, no, I'm sorry, with Howard Stein Hudson, are going to have a, kind of a community reach, you know, community workshop, so they'll present information about what this Complete Streets project is, and if you remember, Rich applied for and received money for a grant, hired a consultant to work with us, and it's, they'll survey the town, they've already surveyed Police Chief, Fire Chief, DPW Director, talking about areas in town where we can improve, make bike lanes, but increase, improve sidewalks, improve intersections, so now they'll take that preliminary information that, from the town officials, and, and they've, they added that, you know, they also had that map on, on the, on our website, where people could add, it was a Google map where they could.
Mm-hmm.
Drop comments and pins and stuff, so we'll take that, add it to the official's comments, and then just have a exchange with the public to talk about, you know, what the preliminary plans are, preliminary thoughts are, if there's anything we're missing, get just, just an opportunity to exchange more information with the residents, so. He just asked me to help publicize that, so again, it's Thursday, December 6th, in the Freeman Kennedy School cafeteria, that's right across from the gymnasium where we vote, it's kind of across the little foyer there, over on the left-hand side as you look at the building, and encourage people to come, should be an interesting workshop. I know the planning board's probably, they've had a little bit of work on it.
Absolutely.
As well.
Well, here's the bad news, Thursday, December 6th is also going to be a major meeting with the King Philip School Committee on the budget process, that we will, that would be helpful to have you both there, but if, if we want to divide and conquer here, we can certainly do that, but that was one of the things I want to relay tonight, be 7 o'clock, it'll be a posted meeting, Sue, if you can post us all for that, for, you know, if, whoever shows up, but I will.
It's at the high school?
It is, yes, it's in the library of the, well, no.
That's usually where they have them.
Yes, it's in the library of the high school, I don't know why I'm hesitating.
And it's their meeting, but you're at the three of you.
It is going to be their school committee meeting, but the, the topic will be the budget process, and what we're, what, we have submitted to them a one-page request of what we would like them to help us understand, I guess is a good way to say it, that came out of that informal meeting we had the other day, or a couple of weeks ago. I will forward to Jack the list that we put together, so that he can send it to you, two folks, to Kevin and Jeff. I equally agree that this would be, I'd, I'd like to go to this meeting as well, on the.
Well, there will be some more workshops, so.
But I definitely need to be at the King Philip meeting.
Yeah.
You guys will have to make your own choice.
I think I will lean toward attending the Complete Streets meeting, just because of the work we've done on the planning board, and the involvement on that side, but I'll think about it over the next couple of days.
No, I, I think that makes sense, because a lot of this falls under the planning, so, yeah, I think that, that's fine. Jeff, you can go half one meeting and half the other if you want.
Well, unfortunately, when it's in upstate New York.
That is unfortunate.
Yeah, well.
Stay out, stay out of Lake Erie area.
Issue with a customer, so that's a way to deliver a message, is, neat to see you.
I understand.
It's going to be a couple feet of snow up there by the end of the week, I think.
Well, let's get into the warrant.
So we have the warrant, the final version was actually posted today, out in the public in the three precincts, and is out on our website, on the, if you go to the annual town, or the town meeting, there's a town meeting button on the homepage, you go there, you can see the warrant, we've also put the advisory board comments out there as well, you have the advisory board comments, hopefully on your blotter there.
You're probably, I mean, I don't know how much confusion Article 1 may be, you know, provide to some people, I mean, it's very clear to me, but then I'm in that business, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, so I actually.
It's, the wording is a little bit convoluted, but.
Yeah, so maybe I'll put an example out on the.
Because this is a good.
Attach it to this.
This actually demonstrates the, the good, underlying financial transactions that we make, where we constantly are saving money on our loans, on our obligations by refinancing and so on, and we want to use that, that money should be dedicated back to the debt. That's, that's in essence what this says, but it may be confusing to people.
Yeah.
So I think an example of that would be helpful.
Okay.
If you're not in that business, this is confusing to people. Do you?
I agree.
Okay.
It's confusing to me.
So we'll do some kind of example on that.
Yeah, and also I was going to say, so we, we receive authorization to borrow 5,000, we.
Yeah, just show, yeah.
We get 300,000 dollars.
Here's what it costs us, we refinance, here's, yeah.
And we, then we only end up borrowing 4.7 million, so it's, all right.
I mean, it's a good thing, I would.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
People would understand, this is a positive, not an negative, but it is confusing, I think, to folks that aren't in the finance business.
Second article is the transfers, so, and Todd has, I know he presented them here a few weeks ago, and then he given up, he gave them to the advisory board last week as well. Third item is prior year bills, and we have two RICO bills, two of our copier bills that they sent to us after year-end, after we'd already closed the book, so, we just need to receive authorization to pay those, but they're a couple hundred dollars, and we'll pay them out of this year's budget, once we have authority to do that. Article four is the capitals items, again, I know Todd presented those to you, one police car, for example, some other equipment, a car for the building department, and a, you know, Ford Escape, and then a Transit, Ford Transit for the building department, I mean, for the maintenance department. Those are the big items, obviously, that is also where the, the funding is for the water chestnut equipment, so there was a request that was sent to us, that asked us to change the language and say rent or buy, but we didn't, since we're just doing it as a transfer, we didn't have to, we didn't have to make any adjustments to the warrant. we didn't have to, we didn't have to make any adjustments to the warrant.
So, it's not a separate article anymore?
No, it's not a separate article, so it'll just be...
It's a good decision.
So, Bob has had some discussions with, very preliminary discussions with some other towns, talking about trying to do a joint buy of that, so, so the thought is we could take that money that we were gonna use to rent the equipment, possibly go out and buy. Obviously, before he does that, he'll, he'll talk to you folks, but...
Be wonderful if they agree to that.
Yeah, that's something that actually seems to make sense, you know, people always want us to go out and joint, joint buy a, a street cleaner, is one thing.
We all wanna use it on the same day.
Always wanna use it in the same month, yeah, so, you know, I think, I think this is actually something we, seems like we could share, you know.
And that was about 75 grand, if I remember, 75, 80 grand?
Yeah. Article five and six are just capital items, there's, my recollection is there's one item in each, in each of those enterprise funds. But we're just asking for money out of those enterprise funds to, to purchase that equipment. Article seven is the town administrator, I'm sorry, it is not the town administrator, is the ability for town officers or committees to give reports, or for people to ask questions of any committees.
Are we doing an affordable housing?
Yes.
We're also gonna do a public safety one, too.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I'll mention that to George, I don't, I'm, I'm sure he's planning on it anyway, but I'll mention it to him. And I'll, let's see, I can remember who the Affordable Housing Trust Chairman is, I'll figure out who that is, and we'll do that.
I'll ask.
Okay. Article eight is the community preservation request to provide some funding to the Norfolk Affordable Housing Trust, which that would be the, probably the primary update that you were just talking about. Article nine is, Article nine, 10, and 11 are all planning board, or, or, I should say, actually zoning bylaw changes. Article nine is a change to the zoning map for the Water Supply Protection District. I think I've given you the planning board recommendations, they recommended approval of nine and 11. My understanding, and Kevin, if I misspeak, please correct me, but I think 10, they, they voted to indefinitely postpone, really only for, I think they wanna study it a little bit further.
Yeah, to vet it out a little bit more before springtime meeting, that's correct.
Yeah, so, no, no major, no major conspiracy theories there or anything, just, just some more vetting going on. Article 12 is funding of the Energy Committee audit, I think we talked about that at our last selectmen meeting, or two selectmen meetings ago. And the, the Energy Committee came and talked to the advisory committee about that as well. I think the bottom line being that there was, again, that debate about whether or not getting the pro bono audit or paying for it, and obviously, there were some concerns about getting it pro bono, and then the engineers expecting to get a contract after the fact for the work that they suggest getting done. That was one reason not to do it, and then, I guess, I think after kind of raising that question, it came to light more so that we've already done a lot of the low-hanging fruit, we've done all the lights, we've done streetlights, we've made some other upgrades within Town Hall that would, would discourage some of the auditors from, from doing the pro bono work. So, the Chair and some of the other folks on the committee have spoken to, you know, they've gone out and gotten a bid, so they're, they're all set to go. But they've, but in, in having some of those discussions, they, they realized that the auditors probably weren't, weren't gonna really be happy about doing the pro bono work, and we're not gonna give us the report that we needed. So, this'll actually get us a more in-depth report than, than we would've if we'd gone the pro bono route. So, I think everybody, at least everybody in the Energy Committee and myself and my, my team seems to be all on the same page. And I think the advisory board had some questions, but, but we're going with it by the end of the discussion. Article 13, again, is that article that now Mr. DeLuca has word Smith to death. And this is, goes back to that legislation that goes back five years, and this, the legislature took some action to, to give us five acres of land around the Pond Street Recreation Facility. Representative Dooley is working with us to try and get that across the finish line, and I think we've, we've had some, from our point of view, we've had some transition at DCAM, the Department of Capital Asset Management. And so, we've had a good partner to work with the last six months or so on this, and so, we've...
Can I make a suggestion on this one?
No.
Please?
Yes, you can.
Can you put up, after you put up the article?
Yeah, we've got a couple of good maps.
Put up a map, number one, and then, number two, a simple, one paragraph, three-line statement that explains that.
Well, you see my little box there, it says one, it says that gives the selectmen the authority to acquire land offered by the Commonwealth, to expand the Pond Street Recreation Field.
That'll work.
That's why...
That is a great idea.
And this is something that was done years ago, right?
Five years ago.
If I understand correctly.
Five years ago.
So, this is already voted on, done, it was just a matter of execution that was open still, right?
Okay.
Welcome to the state.
Yeah, you know, and, and, you know, and that... We could've, we, we didn't work well with that Department of Capital Asset Management, apparently, and so we had a lot, there's some tough, there's still some tough... The problem is, there's still gonna be some, there's a lot of wetlands down there, et cetera, so it's hard to, it's hard to get a good functional space. So, if you look at the map, you know, so our, so our Pond Street goes like, it's kinda like a curved arc. And you get the Pond Street down here, and then you got the arc going around like this, which is our land. So, we're gonna add a little bit here, we're gonna add a little bit here, and we're gonna add a little bit here, and then try and sneak three fields in there. And Andy Beckenowski, who's worked for the Department of Corrections, which who's, who actually owns that land now, you know, he and I have had discussions. It's a very, it is very difficult land, so we're hoping, but we're paying $400 an acre, so it's kinda like, almost they're giving it to us. So, we, you know, and, and Ann has worked with Gale Associates to put together, you know, the engineers. So, we think we've finally got some good plans, and we were able, as I said, we were able to work with a good partner over at DCAM now. And we'll bring it over the, bring it over the finish line. And Representative Dooley has talked about trying to expand it, to try and get some more land, so, but he wanted to get this done first. Then Article 14 is just a, per request of some folks in Town Hall and, and down at the Senior Center. For some reason, and I didn't try to figure out the history, but in our bylaws, this is, the Council on Aging was the one committee that had kind of a term limit set on it, so you could, you could serve for two terms, then you had to get off for, I think it was two terms, and then you can get back on. It's the only one that had that term limit trigger on there, and we've got some folks that would like to continue serving, and we're in need of some volunteers, so I was asked to just write up a little bylaw change to, to remove that, that term limit designation from the warrant, so I did.
It was been a hot committee back then.
I guess, it must've been, yeah.
I'm not touching that. They've, they've had trouble retaining members recently, and I don't know, I don't know the history of that either, I have no idea.
I don't know, they, there's always been a little politic, a little, little more politics than I would've expected, but, but talking to some other towns, apparently, it's very common to have a lot of politics around the Senior Center.
We certainly had our share recently.
Yeah, so, we're not alone on that.
Well, it's a short, it's a short warrant.
Yeah.
I hope this, I mean, I never know, I, you never know, but I don't think there's anything here that's gonna create a lot of debate, but we'll see. That leaves us 400,000 in free cash, right?
Correct. Yep.
Any other, any, any other committee reports, you think? I mean, I, the only two I could think of was affordable housing and public safety. Oh, can we get some pictures of the Public Safety Building?
Oh, yeah.
For that report?
Yep.
Because it's, it's looking good. It's painted, and it's really, it looks like a building. We had a meeting on it today, and even, even, Matt is pleased with progress now, so.
Yeah.
It's nice to hear. And we're hoping that, that the police will be occupying that building by the end of January. That's the plan.
Yeah.
But there is work to be done.
Yeah, I don't know, CPC is the only other one that occasionally has a report, but I think Cindy actually likes to do that at the springtime meeting.
I don't think they've made any purchases this year, that I can remember.
So, they'll talk about their article, or we'll talk about it anyway, but...
You guys have any comments, or anything you guys wanna speak to at the meeting, or, like, we'll jump in if we have to, I guess, but I don't think...
No, I was kidding around with Kevin earlier, that, you know, we used to go through and assign who was gonna talk about what article.
We did used to do that.
I wouldn't mind getting back into that once we get to the spring, but I don't wanna take Jack's gusto away for his...
That's when we had 108 articles coming.
Little bit of a different situation.
No, I'm serious, we, we had 108 articles, and we figured, well, we gotta go through and assign some priority to this, so that we could be sure that we were well-prepped on any particular article, 'cause it was a lot, it went two nights. And it was, and there were some testy articles on there, so that's the reason we did it.
Gotcha.
This is not, I mean...
No, I don't think, I don't...
We haven't had a town meeting where we've had 108 articles in a while.
No, I think that one tried, I almost, that one almost killed me, so.
Yeah, almost killed all of us.
It was awful. I know there was some in the, and there was a couple of 60s.
Very sticky.
Sixty-something articles, and that was, it was, it was tough, I mean, it's just, you know, working with 16 different point people on their article, and, you know, articles, trying to get the language right, trying to get town council to approve the language, blah, 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 blah. It's just, it's, I wouldn't wish that on anybody. But I have a plan, I've got some people in town who are gonna, I got a lot of petitions coming in next spring. Right, Sue?
Yeah.
That could significantly impact what we do two weeks from today.
Gonna be an activist here in town.
You'll have to sit in the visitor's section.
Yeah, I got a call from the New York Town Administrator, he wants to get me on some committees, like, yeah, you gotta give me some time, buddy. Need some time.
Two days, is that long enough?
No, two years, I was thinking.
Alright, just again, on, on the KP, that meeting, as I said, will be Thursday, the 6th, unfortunately. We, we've asked them, just quickly, I can outline a couple of things, but I'll, I'll forward it on to you, but we're looking for more detail on the special ed in terms of what they anticipate, some of the changes that will be made, they have a new sped director, and of course, a new superintendent, as you know, and the superintendent's area of expertise is special ed. So, I know that they're working diligently to try and make some changes there, whether it be reducing the number of outplacements and transportation costs or whatever. I don't wanna prejudge that, but we've asked for that. We've, we've asked for an analysis of budget to actuals, which generally, schools don't provide, because, and I say that in defense of them, because you vote one number for schools, and they will move money around from department to department, which we cannot do on the governmental side. So, we do budget to actuals routinely, because it's easy to do, it's by cost code, not the case with schools. But we are looking for more of an analysis on basically, here's what you said you were gonna do, we'd like to know what actually happened. And, and we've framed it in a way that it's, it's not awkward for them to do. So, we're, we're looking for that information, we have agreed that we're gonna ask them to do a level services budget based on a 3% of budget increase, as opposed to the 3% of allocation, which is we, and we were unanimous on that. That, I was very pleased that that did not require a debate, there was immediate agreement on that, which I think is a good place for them to start. And that if they need more money, we're asking them to identify specifically the benefits of that additional dollar. So, if, if you want $10 more, what does that buy the community with that analysis? I think it makes it easier for people to understand where the value is in terms of spending three, three and a half, four. I've come up, you're gonna scare, I mean, this one's gonna scare you, but I've, I've come up with, I think, a way to project how much we might get charged. Uh, yeah, I know, it scared me a little bit, too.
Minimum contribution calculation?
Yeah. Well, I went back and looked at the last 10 years for all three towns, and did an average of all of the three towns, and see if I could get any correlation between the numbers, and there is a correlation. I may be taking a little bit of a liberal term on that, but there is, there is some identity, and I took that correlation and applied it to the last three years, took that average and applied it to this coming year based on a 3% increase. So, I'm hopeful, but I think it's closer than we've ever been.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's a great idea.
So, we'll see, so I'm...
Nothing else, you could at least get a range, like, worst case, best case in there.
Yeah, I, I think it'll get us in the ballpark, because there, there is a relate, you, you can see when, when you go back and you look, especially when you do it with three towns, if you just did it with our town, you really can't tell. But when you do it with all three towns and then blend the three numbers together to see where the differences are, I actually came up with a quotient, a quotient that would actually, I think, apply to that, so, anyway, we'll see. But I'll, I'll send it to you tomorrow, and I'll send it all around, you guys take a look at it, but... I went back and did it on the nine years, not counting last year, took that average, and then applied it to last year to see how it actually played out, and it was within a 10% factor, so that gave me some faith that there's some value to it. Wasn't exact, but it was within 10%.
Not gonna be exact, yeah.
10% is pretty good on that, on that number, so we'll see how that all plays out. But I think it'd at least give Todd something to gauge, 'cause we've, I mean, last, last year, we weren't even close.
So, is there 3%, is there 3% increase in the budget based on what they presented to us at town meeting, or what?
Well, that was, that was an interesting question.
Okay.
Because that 3% is, that, that 3% is actually about $425,000 more than what they presented, but we knew about $300,000 of it.
So, they, so the school committee vote, and, and they told us they were doing it, but they...
The 300 they didn't, they didn't, well, they had to tell us the other, but they told us retroactively after they did the vote, which is fine, it, it wasn't a big deal. But the number we voted is actually $425,000 higher than what we voted. And we knew about $300,000 of it, they were very open about that. They, they took $300,000 of their E and D money and applied it, I think mostly to capital, if I remember, but whatever they applied it to at that point in time. But we knew they were gonna do that, 'cause they didn't have the certified E and D at the time of the budget, so that was agreed to. And then they got more transportation aid, if I recall.
Yeah, they always get a little, they always, there's always some budget tweaks after our town.
And sometimes it works against them, too.
Yep.
It goes both ways. And I think they restored the late bus, and I think something else with that fund, which is a good decision, you know, they made a good decision.
We did meet, the Town Administrator has met with Paul, again, Paul's any of the new superintendent, and, you know, we talked about the budget process very high level. Just told him, said, whatever you do, don't, you know, don't give us the, the sky is falling, and then vote the budget, and then put the sky back in place, I mean, you know, 'cause that's, that's happened, hasn't happened for a few years, but that happened four or five years ago.
Didn't happen last year.
No, 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 the last three years have been much better.
It did happen the years before, yeah.
Yeah, they told us they were gonna have to cut 30 teachers, and they...
Well, they were gonna cut all varsity sports.
And they were, and then they cut four after, you know, after, because they've moved some money around.
I think that message was delivered loud and clear last year.
Oh, yeah.
So, we'll see, I, I, personally, I, I thought the meeting we had went well, and, and preliminary talks I've had with a couple of school committee members, I, I think, I think we're off to a good start.
I think Paul, and I think Paul is very credible, I think he'll present good information, and Larry is a, the business manager is very knowledgeable, too, so it's, they're a good team.
And I'm gonna be meeting with Ingrid on population growth, we're gonna talk about, gotta talk about that. I mean, I, I've seen their recommendations and their strategy, but we, you know, we're gonna have a conversation about that, and then we'll get her to probably come to one of our meetings sometime after the first of the year, I mean, there's no hurry on that. But I think it would be good to have a good public conversation on it.
Did you see that, that PowerPoint presentation?
I did.
If I didn't forward it to you, I'll, I'll forward it to you tomorrow, they did it, at their, one of their school committees, she forwarded it to me a couple of weeks ago.
Why don't you send it around to us all the way, anyway? And I had a department head meeting and an employee meeting, Sue, I think, was there. I, I think it went very, very well.
That's what I heard.
Did you get the same feedback, I hope?
I did.
Good. Sharing, like, you have DPW, you know, where our responsibilities, gave them a list of where all of you guys were and who they could turn to. You know, I, I think we have very talented people in place that allows us to get through this two to three months. The search committee has established their meeting day... The search committee has established their meeting dates, I think the eighteenth is the last date of their interviews, potentially, December eighteenth.
I know the eighteenth is one of them, that's all, that's all I got.
So, they will be doing interviews early in December, so by mid-December they should be ready to provide us some files. We may actually be in a position to interview finalists at the end of December.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That would be really good.
Yeah.
And that would give us a shot, potentially, at a February first date as opposed to a March first date.
Yeah.
A shot. But depending on, you know, I don't have any idea how many resumes or any, I mean, all of us are removed from that process, but if they have good candidates and they feel comfortable that they can bring us three or four, or however many they so choose finalists, we might be able to do that in December.
Fantastic.
That would be really good. If you guys don't mind a little bit around Christmas, I think that would be worth our time to do, if we have a shot at getting somebody here February first.
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Yeah.
If I could just throw a pitch in for, you know, for Sue, doing a great, she has been doing a great job for years, but it's certainly gonna be a trying time for her with me leaving and with Marion leaving as well. Marion Harrington leaves us this week after thirty-something years. So, and I know you met with department heads and that's all great, but the reality is the phone ringing, the people coming in, she's gonna, she's gonna be, despite her best efforts, probably gonna be drowning on occasion. I know Scott's prepared to help, which would be great, but just be sympathetic to, to Susan and.
We'll get through it.
And we are, we were, we've, she's been advertising to put a staff position in to really kind of replace Marion leaving. If you look back a year ago, we had, you know, Sue doing the affordable housing and Marion doing the board of selectmen, while now Sue's been doing affordable housing and, and a majority of the, the board of selectmen. So, the, the plan that I had put in place was to have now kind of a junior admin person working with Sue to, to support her on both of those veins, areas. So, she's been, so, we posted internally, we had one internal candidate, that didn't work out, but, so hopefully we'll get some good external candidates. But Sue and Scott have been looking at those and I've been helping when I can.
Great.
Hopefully we'll get somebody in rather quickly to just help.
That would be good.
Get them started. Quicker we can swap them the stuff, the better.
And you're gonna, you're gonna do, you're gonna complete the performance reviews on all your department heads by, before you leave?
Absolutely.
And I know you're working on your list.
Yep, a big, long list of all the open items.
And I didn't think you'd make it by tonight, but if you could make it by the, by Town Meeting, that would be great.
Okay.
Because I, I know there's a lot on your plate. I don't think it'll be two pages.
It's not.
Don't spare the detail, because it'll help us.
Yeah.
Any other business, Kevin?
Nope, nothing for mine.
Mr. Palumbo? Mr. Hathaway? Somehow it just doesn't seem fitting to bring this to an end for you.
No, well, the one final thing, I guess my last business was just, I have a, there was a DPW meeting, I don't know if they invited you tomorrow at ten, just to get an update on the well, so, we'll, we'll hear from environmental partners tomorrow. Hopefully there was some good information.
Are you available to go to that?
I can send you some, it's, I don't, I don't.
I will try.
It's not like DEP's gonna be there, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been pretty much up to date on that. If you can't, I can go, but I won't go if you're going.
It's at the DP, it's at Bob's office, so.
Yeah.
I'll let you know before midnight.
Yeah, just let him know. If you're there, great. If not, I'll fill in. Anything else?
No, it was a, it was an interesting day, right, Susan? There was, it was not a day to sit at the desk.
It was an interesting day.
People coming and going all day long, so.
It was a crazy day.
My email's full again, so that's, that's good news. By good news, I mean bad news.
Well, you've weathered eight selectmen.
What's up?
You've weathered eight selectmen. I said, we, Mr. Garrity, Mr. Smith, Mr. Bugby, Mr. Tomaszewski, Mr. Ivani, Mr. Calcutt, Mr. Leehan, Mr. Palumbo, Mr. Bugby, I said him twice, I think. Did I miss anybody?
Joyce Tario?
Well, Joyce, Joyce and.
Joyce was not on when you was Town Administrator.
When I was the finance director.
Okay.
Jack McFeely and Joyce.
And Jack resigned just before you, when we were in the search.
He was interested in applying for the job.
Yeah. So, you've weathered eight of us.
Yeah, it's been, you know, and I.
And you had a full head of hair when you started.
I did, and I was two feet taller. I was a little bit taller than Kevin.
I didn't think anybody's taller. I didn't think anybody's taller.
I had a deeper voice at that point, too.
Kevin will be six-two by the time he's done with his first year, and it'll be six-one. When you're five-eight, you're gonna have to get a whole new wardrobe.
Nice.
That's in my heart, yeah. Well, Jeff, you, you missed it, but Jeff, Jim gave, Jim spoke very kindly with my tenure here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Well, you said he was just warming up for Town Meeting, so I'm sure he'll get another chance to hear.
As you guys shipped in, anytime.
But it's, it's, it's been hard for me, you brought, we brought it up a couple of weeks ago and it's been hard for me to talk about it, actually, because it's, you know, it's been very, I, Liz and I have a lot of mixed, lot of mixed emotions. You know, we have a lot of friends here, we've raised our kids here, it's a great town, we've loved it. People ask me, you know, how can you work in the same town, you know, how can you work as a town administrator in the same town that you live? And it's ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, I'll tell you, it's been the greatest decision. Gives, I think it gives me some credibility, like you've said, it's, you know, these decisions impact me, too, so I can, you know, I can stand up at Town Meeting and say, hey, you know, we're gonna do this, but, but, you know, and it impacts me, too, and, you know, I realize it's gonna cost me some money, but I think it's the right thing to do. You know, I think it's, it was helpful for me. Meant, meant I had to go on the soccer fields and listen to people and go to a couple of Christmas parties and have people pinging me about tax rates and stuff, but it was a small price to pay. It's been a great community and it's, you know, all the things that I got to do that were, you know, attend the Veterans Day ceremonies and Memorial Day parades and I, every year I went over to the school and taught a history class to the fifth graders. I'd spend the morning with four different classes and, you know, talk about the three branches of, they, they had just learned about the executive branch, so then I would teach them about the, how that related to the state government and then to the local government. You know, those things are just, they're a blast, I mean, it was just so nice to be able to be a part of a community and do that.
It is, it is a special place in many regards.
Absolutely.
You know, you talk about, you know, when we went to the retirement party for the library, I got cornered over there, and then we went to a neighborhood party the following night and I got cornered in there. But, you know, it, 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 there's something even good about that.
Yeah.
Because it's your own community talking about their concerns, their needs, whatever it might be. And these weren't bad conversations, they were just informational kinds of conversations. But every now and then someone comes up and thanks you.
I gotta thank you, no, tonight.
And when that happens, it makes all of the other ones go away. You only need one to, to realize what a really great town it really is. And, and, just doing the best we can.
Yeah.
Just trying to help. And that's what your job has been, you're just trying to help.
Yeah, I just, you know, and, and I did go interview a couple of times to other towns and fortunately those didn't work out. But when they'd ask about my accomplishments, I, I could never speak about my, you know, I was like, no, no, you know, all these, this list of things that, that I talk about that Norfolk has done are not my accomplishments, they're, I mean, it's always been a team effort. We never would have been able to balance the budget without, you know, good board of selectmen who were reasonable, with a good advisory committee, and the Town Meeting who, you know, A, either worked with us or, or B, I think the last five years, put a lot of, I don't wanna say blind trust, but, but trusted us because we.
Well, but it's earned. I mean, yeah, it's earned. I mean, our finances are in excellent condition, they're in excellent condition. And do we do everything we like to do? No.
No.
But we can't, you know, we, we can only do what we can pay for. And one thing I didn't say, we're still on TV, but I'll say it, one of the things that I've always appreciated, you and I have butted heads on occasion.
A couple of good times.
Couple of good times. We've butted heads and had our disagreements and points of view and so on, and we've always been able to walk out and have a beer at the end of the day. And that's a, that's a rare opportunity when you have that.
Like I said, the feeling is mutual. And I would be remiss, again, Sue's done a great job, Marion has done a great job, you know, Marion, I mean, you talk about, you and I have worked together for fifteen years, but, you know, Marion and I have worked together for fourteen years in, in the, in the office. I've known this, you know, I've never worked with anybody that long, and she's done a great job and Sue has been spectacular. But I, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about, you know, all the department heads, Chuck and Cole and Bob Bullock, Todd coming in the last couple of years.
Bob McGee.
Bob McGee, Butch Vito. Butch, Butch had his own, you know, Butch was great, he did a lot of great things. He was controversial, but he got things done. The library, you know, they've done libraries, we were very proud of our library, I don't get enough time to spend enough time over there, but all those folks do a great job. It's, there's a lot of great, you know, there's a lot of, particularly Town Hall, because I work with them the closest, I mean, Public Safety people, they're, they're wonderful and, and I think we talk about them, Jim, you talk about them in particular a lot, and they deserve all the credit in the world. Town Hall people don't, don't get a lot of, a lot of credit, I think, that they deserve. There are a lot of people that work here and have worked here over the years that, that treat Norfolk, whether they grew up here or they live here now, or even if they just work here, I say just work here, they, they treat it as their town and, and they care about, you know, making sure things are done right and, you know, if somebody's taking it, if they see somebody doing something improper, whether it's not paying a bill or, you know, trying to get away with something, they'll call them on it. I mean, and they do it because they care about Norfolk and, I mean, and I, and, or they'll call on another employee saying, you know, what are you doing that for? It's a waste of, you know, it's a waste, don't, don't be doing that. And we, so we kind of self-police very well. But, you know, Julie Chefko's, Mary Norris, you know, Carol and Anthony in the clerk's office, I, I shouldn't name names because I'll leave half of them off, but Emery and Cheryl Kelly in the treasurer's office, you know, Karen Terry, Karen Tripp, Karen Mitnick down at DPW, so many people that, that, you know, really love this town and really, you know, I don't, people probably don't see the impact that all those people have on the town, but they really, because they care so much about the town and, you know, they're, they, they provide a great service to the town and make my job easy. I appreciate everything they do. Taught, they taught me a lot, I mean, got probably way more than I taught them.
Well, I'm gonna miss your sense of humor, Jack.
Well, sometimes that's.
Dry humor, sometimes goes over my head, like, normally I can, you know?
Spoken like a true engineer. You left yourself vulnerable for that one.
Well, you know, sometimes, you know, I'm all business and I'm, and Jack would say something and I'm still wondering what, what just happened. But it's, it's, it's been a real pleasure, Jack, and, you know, at times have been a few steps removed on some of the other boards. This board has given me the opportunity to spend, you know, that much more time, you know, whether it's in these meetings or offline and, and you're gonna be missed. And, you know, you put your heart and soul into the job and that was pretty apparent to all of us. And, you know, we'll be very lucky if we can find someone that can come anywhere close to putting, you know, their heart and soul in the job the way you have over the past several years, so that's the objective, but it's a, it's a tall order, so.
I have confidence you'll find somebody with a lot of great talents, so. Thank you, I appreciate it, Jeff, I really do.
It's nice to sit back and, you know, reminisce for a little bit and recognize all the good things that have happened, but sometimes we want to, a few bad things get in the way of remembering all the good things. The town is in a better place now than it was fifteen years ago, not without its issues. We'll always have them, we'll always have disagreements. Democracy is not perfect, but I can't think of anything that's better, so, unless you live in Florida, good luck. But, you know, it's, it's an imperfect system that works pretty darn well. And I, I think, well, I think we've said enough, but, well, we haven't said enough, but I think probably they're tired of it.
You have said more than.
The TVs have all gone off about a half an hour ago, so it's, you know, but we do appreciate all you've done, and you will be missed.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
You will be missed.
Kevin, it's been a pleasure getting to know you and.
Absolutely, you as well.